I put new batteries in them so they should be good.
Alright, and the supervisor can return.
Here.
Clerk McInnes-Straw, here. Treasurer Melissa Bochamp.
Here.
Trustee Adiral Howard.
Here.
And trustee Michael Puskowski is excused, yep.
Approval of the agenda, any deletions or additions to the agenda? Seeing as none, I'll make a note in the clerkess' present.
I'll second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. First citizen's time, agenda items only. No one? Prove of August eleventh twenty twenty five minutes. I don't know if we're able to see anything. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, ask for them.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Supervisor's report, I just got a few things, um Melissa and I attended the Mid-Nary Fire Board meeting. LMR was cancelled that last month, so we didn't have to do that. Um still working with Blackrock on the quote for the general information, they're running behind, um getting everybody up on the windows eleven stuff, so we're trying to push them to that run right now. Uh the coven for Downing Road is almost complete, they had to build it cause it's so big, um we're hoping to start replacements soon. And that's all I have.
I made a motion to accept the supervisor's report.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bochamp, seconded by Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report.
Uh just wanted everybody to know that since we do not have a um road millage as of right now, um for the bank in Huntington, since we're not gonna be using Huntington um anymore once I get everything moved, I closed the bank, kept the road fund there, moved all of the money that was in the road fund into the fire fund since it is the same taxpayer money um for both millages. Um will use of that and then I have the new, all of the new accounts open at first merchants. Um taxes are still being collected up until September fifteenth, September fifteenth is a Monday.
Just to beg of the minute, I don't think legally you can use road funding, unless we use for roads. In which um. You know, specifically states is for roads for certain things like roads.
I can move it back out and put it into the general fund, so she can just put it as a line item. I will do that. Thank you for that. Um anyway, um Monday, September fifteenth is the last day for summer taxes, there will be extended hours being held for that date and then after that date, uh interest and penalties will apply on summer taxes. And then as a reminder, the winter taxes will go out December first. And if I have.
I'll make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
I'll second that.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Perks report.
Yep, I don't have a lot and just know that um the ballots will start being sent out at the end of this month. Um I still don't know what happened with the um, there's a case uh with my friend, he wanted to be on the ballot, but I'm not sure exactly what happened with that, that was supposed to be on Friday, but there was no update about it whether he's gonna be on the ballot or not. But once we get the go ahead, I will be um sending out the order form and I'll be mailing them out by the other end.
Um I have one question, it's not directed towards the first department, but um maybe um Penny, are we gonna be able to get the road millage back on in November?
It is. Yeah.
You weren't hearing that with me?
Oh wonderful, thank you, that's awesome.
Yeah, so the road millage will be on the uh November ballot. And um I did talk to the assessor and um she's given me a documentation, a little note on what it would cost for the one mil. For each, you know, for different um amounts for different um property values.
Okay.
So once she gets them out, I'll um send it to everybody so we kind of have an idea on what the taxes will go up. From my understanding, if your your product is worth eighty thousand, it would go up, I mean eighty dollars, something like that, but I'll I'll get it in in.
It's like a thousand dollars.
Yeah, thirty um dollars and a half dollars, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, ten bucks. Yeah, I I haven't remember, yeah, you're right, it was something like that, cause whenever I did mine, I think it was like it was like a hundred, a hundred and twenty, I think, in a year.
Oh, sorry, I didn't notice. Right, like if your product, the property value is worth a hundred and twenty dollars, then give a hundred and twenty dollar increase, okay, but I'll get all the info just. So I'll make a motion, you know anything else to be honest?
Nope, definitely.
I'll make a motion to approv- approve the perks report.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Building Department.
Oh, one thing, whenever you're saying the value, I think you're talking about the assessed value.
Correct, mhm.
Big difference, cause if somebody thinks that it's it's going off of the value, then they're thinking taxes too on that number that you just said, so just I just make sure you correct that, right about there.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I'll get all those numbers and I'll turn up to the next meeting.
And then who made that motion?
I do.
I do.
And then you seconded.
I did.
Building Department report. Had a total of two permits for the month, total fees for um the two permits was two hundred and sixty dollars. And then still a month, huh?
Uh-huh.
I'll make a motion to approve building department report.
Okay.
Oh. Moved by Turner, seconded by Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Assessor's report. Entering sales via recorded documents and PTAs, responding daily to residential requests, approval or denial of exemptions, actively actively evaluating the status of building permits, processing land split in combinations, keeping forms updated in reflection of legislative changes, conducting inspections and reconciliation of site visits.
I made a motion to accept the questions report.
I'll second that, moved by Bochamp, seconded by Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. CA reports. Working with two contractors for the Grants Road court ordered cleanup site following unresponsiveness of previous contractor. One quoted ten thousand not to not to exceed price August twenty sixth, the second is expected this week. Working to have final quotes for board approval ASAP. Multiple communications from June twenty seventh through September first. Continuing work with attorney clerk and PC on ordinance amendments, submitted revised haul route draft to PC on August twenty eighth. PC approved ordinance approval checklist, estimated August fourth. Multiple ongoing commu- new kind of communications at least since March twenty twenty five through September first. Continuing work with building department owners and contractors on new dragway projects. Reinspected burn removal project August twenty fifth with building manager and beef contractor on same September first. Multiple communications from approximately May twenty five to September first. Continuing work with attorney on sensitive noxious weeds enforcement against a prior litigant. Owner acknowledged his final notice but refused to comply August twelfth. Discuss with attorney August twenty sixth and specifically acquired by court order to enforce compliance September first. Previous communications ongoing since June twenty twenty five. Continuing work with building manager and attorneys to secure dereliction orders for numerous deleric and de- depleted buildings throughout township. Had contractors tour multiple sites August sixteenth through September first. Awaiting quotes and sending final notices to property owners this week. Recent discussions since July, previous discussions with building manager, landscape and labor contractors and property owners in twenty twenty four. Reinspected residential extraction alleys in the road with owner August twelfth. Determine all materials was extracted, used on site and advised owner on corrective actions. Followed meeting with owner on September first, reinspection to confirm schedule for September fifth. Researched and submitted findings for a new foyer request August twenty fifth. Met with owner regarding noxious weed on property line complaint on Tullow Hill and helped coordinate contractor to carry out cleanup September first, continuing to monitor. Investigated multiple uncommitted field complaints around township, issued staff work orders followed by zoning permits. Were appropriate and advised owner plan for disruption of permits. For a larger project, multiple communications from about July thirtieth, the newest communications, inspections and other activities throughout the month of August. And then we've got the court cases, which I'll let you guys read, but I'm not gonna read them out loud. I guess I can't do something else, it's not. Court cases, large extraction plank in Oakie, complaints against the township closed, but DAPC co-chair subpoenaed to testify in remaining case now rescheduled for October. Light case Wanto Road, owner failed to respond and filed complaints, attorney requested default judgment on August eighth hearing, judgment pending. CA requested contractors inspect and await in quotes. Light case Darling Road, court complaint filed, owner served and failed to respond. Township attorney will request default judgment on September eighteen, CA requested contractors inspect and await in quotes. Uncommitted bar on Tullow Hill, complaints against township abandoned, abatement of structure hearing happened August twentieth. Owner granted until February twentieth to remove, after which a warrant for the township to remove would be granted. Review review hearing scheduled for February fourth. Possible further updates anticipated in the next few days. Uncommitted bar in Borso, owner countersued, discovery was due by August twenty fifth twenty twenty five, but none was received. And the township attorney is consulted with insurance attorney preparatory to file for summary disposition and a court order to abate the structure. Uncommitted bar in Plank Road, the township's motion for summary disposition on ordinance and code violations as well as most of the owner's current claims were granted in the township's favor. Disposition files on two remaining claims are due by September twelfth and will be heard on October twenty ninth if filed. Motion for abatement of structure to follow back.
I make a motion to accept the zoning industry report.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bochamp, seconded by Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. PC report.
Well, um I wish I had a little bit more information ready for you guys, I uh actually missed the meeting. Um one thing that I need to to do, I actually didn't receive any minutes or anything, it's not, I mean it's still my fault that I missed the meeting. Um but I do want to make sure you guys have my email um on file typed in again, just to make sure that it was on, I didn't miss, I I just think I didn't get the minutes or or the email, that reminder email.
I don't know, did you get the?
We know Doug sent some on September.
I don't think I got them.
Or.
Second, Doug did, I believe it was, Doug has my email, he does attach it um September second for the for the um minutes of for uh August, but that's all that I had. And it was my fault, I wasn't sure if it was, what's either Monday was.
So we should be trusting too at Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Monday.
Yeah, but I could use some of that, the one that you've been emailing me to, Howard Concrete Services, is unnecessary.
Oh, is that what I used, or?
Yeah, just the reason why is because it's the one that pops up on my phone, so like if I use anything else, I may not get them either. But the that way at least I'd be receiving, you see that?
Yeah.
I know a couple other people have said something about not getting the minutes, um is there some way that we can find out?
I don't usually, sometimes I get them, sometimes I don't, sometimes they send them to the.
The CC minutes, or because I don't usually send those out, I think they need because.
Yeah, Amy's what it's supposed to, I can find them with her though.
Yeah.
Um I don't remember sending any, I mean usually Michael Ford into me, but.
Yeah, but he says he doesn't get them either.
Yeah, it it's the, you know, part between, I don't know, something.
Yeah, for you kinda, I mean that would kinda help, I mean it was my fault for missing, but at least sometimes I kinda remind, be like, okay, the minutes, so obviously I have, you know, and anyone, so it's not always fault, but my own, but um but yeah, I did talk to him, I think that uh I believe they they resubmitted the uh the haul route and the um the shipping container ordinance over. Don't quote me on it, like I say, I don't have the minutes even to to go back on for what they did.
You resubmitted what?
The haul route.
Okay.
And the Conex.
Okay.
Ordinance. That should be.
We got the Conex in our packet, right?
I thought that it was, like I say, it was just that I kinda just had like a brief descrip- or you know, brief call, just to catch up on.
I know, we just sent it back to Bonnie because they used the long ones, used the old one.
Yeah, they hold mine, yeah.
Didn't he just say something about that today?
Yeah, but I don't, I I think he said it was yes, but I'm not positive about it, so I don't know.
I don't remember what he said either, but I can remember. Yeah, I know he's, he didn't mention anything on it though, did he?
No. The Conex he did, but that's a different contract.
Yeah, I corrected, I'll discuss that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the PC report.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fanning, I'm reading them up in dispersments.
So I don't have a definitive for Comcast, you know, for DTE for the actual electric um at the township. It's usually about the same, so I left the ones in last month, um so I have uh because we don't have um a road millage in our um general fund, it's gonna be ten thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars for the ditch mowing.
Now, did we get an actual bill from Monroe County for that?
Yes.
Okay, can you get me a copy of that?
Yes. I sure can, yep.
Good. Put that before that.
Yep, and I wasn't sure, um because I did not write the check, because I wasn't sure where it goes since I do now, since it goes to general.
Yeah, we can't take it out of the general fund, so.
I'll have the. Right. Yep, so um general dispersments was twenty four thousand four hundred and thirty four twenty two with payroll, which was thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy eight fifteen. It is a little bit more because we do have um, we had an election, so we did have quite a little bit more. So our total dispersments of general fund is fifty five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty seven cents.
Just a quick question, my numbers are different.
We all got fifty five thousand three fifteen ninety two.
Um mine are two. Did you get your new one? Did you give yourself your new one again?
Did you put it in my?
It's not way off, but it is off for a.
I didn't have your packet, you did.
Oh, no, it's right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this one's gonna be, so the Patrilo.
Five five.
You you get.
We got the right amount there, fifty one fifty six is right.
It's. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't have.
No, the only one I think she had right was the thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy eight fifteen, the other two of the total dispersments, uh I have twenty.
The total, I have fifty five, three fifteen ninety three.
Yeah, this one is. Fifty six, yep. The one that you have is correct, correct, yep.
I think you did get it.
This one's correct then?
Yeah, yep. So the fifty five, three fifteen is wrong?
No, that's right.
Oh.
Just a, yeah.
So ours, right, I think the one she has is just a little off, it didn't sound like much, but.
Okay.
Three fifty, yeah, it was off, I I had Patrilo, I I didn't add everything up. I had it as forty eight dollars, it was supposed to be fifty one dollars and fifty six cents.
Yeah, it's not off that well, but.
Yeah, so she's, she didn't give herself a correct, did she?
Correct.
No, I was supposed to, but I I put it in your thing. If it was sitting there.
I think it's in the back, mine was in the far, far back.
I do not, but I did have it written down now and I did have it.
Okay, my apologies.
I have it too.
I'll go grab you one, I'm there.
You're fine. Okay. No, uh we're good.
Okay.
So total dispersments of general fund is fifty five thousand twenty.
Hold on, you wanna start, hold on, how about we start back over for the um, just to just to clarify.
Okay.
But you're, let's just start back at your front.
So. Okay. So um with the ditch mowing included, it's twenty four thousand four hundred and thirty seven and seventy eight cents.
Yep.
And then with payroll, which was thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy eight fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Which brings brings our total dispersments of the general fund to fifty five thousand three hundred and fifteen ninety three.
Mm-hmm.
Through the um fire millage, uh the fire fund is thirty nine thousand seventy six dollars and fifty four cents. And sewer is a thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, which brings total dispersments of one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and forty seven cents.
Okay.
Anyda? Congratulations on doing your super kind, totally by.
Totally by myself.
And I didn't find anything but the one, the number of.
Yep, and also I waited a couple of, couple of hours.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve dispersments from the general fund in the amount of fifty five thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and ninety three cents.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, roll call please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strad, yes. Treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Puskowski is excused.
I'll make a motion to approve dispersments from the sewer fund in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, roll call please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strad, yes. Trustee Bochamp, or uh treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Puskowski is excused.
I'll make a motion to approve dispersments from the fire fund in the amount of thirty nine thousand seventy six dollars and fifty four cents.
Second.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, roll call please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strad, yes. Treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Puskowski is excused.
And there was no dispersments from the road funds, so bringing total market expenses to one hundred and one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and forty seven cents. Unfinished business, Harnico PA one sixteen termination.
Oops, we uh, we need to do um, we need to uh do a roll call now to, right, from here.
No, there's no road funds, there's no road funds.
No.
Oh, the road fund, oh wait, oh wait, yeah, I, oh.
No, this is here.
Oh, that's where it is.
Because we don't have a road fund to be um.
Oh, that's what I, I'm sorry.
You just pressed it right.
I I got it in the wrong spot, sorry.
Okay.
We have a a termination request from um Harnicos um at eighty six fifty seven Bunt Road in Dundee. Looks like they wanna get out of the um PA one sixteen, take the ring out of it. I looked at it, looks like everything's in here that we need it. And uh. Still there.
Where's the stat on marks exactly?
Uh there's a little map in there, just kinda shows you where it's at. It's a little piece of farm land that they're taking on with the PA one sixteen, so it's a, it's a, it's a. There you go.
Okay, that's okay.
They were farming and they're gonna sell it to the quarry next door.
They are going to?
Mm-hmm. That's what they've got to do.
And that goes all the way over here.
Looks like they.
Pay and bunt.
And bunts. They bought up right against the fair. I tell you, it is.
Yeah, they talked to.
I can't, you're so set, so we're buying it to the south, actually.
Uh-huh.
Yes, the southeast, yeah.
Southeast quarter section of section thirty one, town five south, then seven east. And it looks like the value of paperwork, um.
Yeah, and they do know that there is a seven here, um that they're gonna have to pay that taxes.
That they reported up.
Yes.
Well, that's me.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any more?
I'll just make sure.
No, I think it's here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I like triple check, because I hope hope him on doing PA one sixteens, but not a termination. So I did get ahold of the um uh Michigan Agricultural Department just to make sure that everything is here that they need.
So we just have to fill out this, this request?
Yeah, yeah, and then I sent it to them and um.
So basically they'd be extending this all the way to Day Road, I think it, right there?
Yeah, they're basically not around this one three sides, I think it is.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the Harnico PA one sixteen termination.
I'll second that.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Howard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone who can, can share.
Yep, I will prepare that for them.
Of course. So you, the township will send that to the state and then they still have to approve it.
Correct, and then, yep, what they do, the state will deny or approve, if it's approved, then it goes to treasury, state treasury department, they figure out what the taxes are, they'll get ahold of you themselves.
Okay, so you will, you will just wait until you're from the state?
Correct, yep, yep.
You live on that same side of the road, right? I live right there. So there isn't gonna, are you just like in section, I didn't look at it too well, but um. No, they, they will, they'll buy the whole thing. Oh, okay, okay. I mean, that's up to you, huh?
So you're moving to it?
Yep.
Read notes, too.
Uh we have some property on this number, bro.
Okay.
We'll wait for that, huh?
Yep. I can't blame you.
I can't either.
Okay.
Moving on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And I'll have that in the mail by Thursday.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Cross tile critical, I got um a call from Monroe County, no permission. We've got several cross tiles that I sent a picture, you can see is a huge sinkhole, it's collapsing.
Oh boy.
Yeah, so they're, all three of these are critical, um so they want to uh get it started and I do have a total cost. And I'm still waiting on the bills for the others, once I get those bills, um I already talked to the county, I can submit for that forty thousand dollar grant to help us with these. Um let's see here. So the total cost will be fourteen thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars for these three that are critical.
Fourteen thousand.
Six hundred eighty eight.
Six eighty eight.
So it's a total so far, including these, um we have spent a hundred and twenty one thousand nine sixty nine and we'll get a forty thousand dollar grant, which will bring our our cost to eighty one thousand nine sixty nine, but we have fixed one, two, three, four, five and third, the large and six, seven, eight, nine, for that cost size, so.
Okay.
How much is ours again?
Uh eighty one thousand nine hundred sixty nine. And we budgeted like a hundred thousand, so we, we budgeted what we budgeted. But once we can start getting these bills and we pay them, I can get the forty thousand dollar grant to re-reverses.
It's a better, though, now that you've got bill to go towards that also?
No.
No?
No.
Is that's gonna be general fund at all times?
Mm-hmm. I, like I said, I applied for grants.
Yeah.
Cause I knew we were gonna be needing some cross tiles, so. So and they like um, they'll pay us half of what we spent, so we had to spend at least eighty thousand to make a forty thousand, so. That's why I'm gonna have done, done. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the three cross tiles at a cost of fourteen thousand six hundred eighty eight dollars.
Six.
Moved by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, roll call please.
Sure can, supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strad, yes. Treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Puskowski is excused.
And you know, if you're on Thursday and get those signed, it's good. Okay, moving on. Spring cleanup bids, I've got two bids for our spring cleanup, which is scheduled for October eighteen from nine to three and.
Spring or fall?
Fall, I'm sorry.
What date was it again?
October eighteen.
Should be fall cleanup bids, not spring. Um it's October eighteenth, nine to three, um we will not be doing tires this time, we only do those in the spring. Um I still have grant money left, so we won't be able to do that this spring at no cost for the township. And we'll be able to do this fall and add no cost, I think we're gonna load those, so I'll start applying for more grants for for spring cleanup. And I've got two, one from Fairway disposal, um at a cost of two thousand nine hundred and fifty, and that's for one thirteen yard roll off, two garbage trucks, two employees and it it is snowball off, if needed, a thirty yard. Are we gonna, are we gonna have both thirteen and thirty, I think?
Uh thirteen and thirty yard roll offs, yeah, thirteen would be a little bit metal again, and then thirty would just be for any kind of bulk items, like, you know, crush, you know, to try.
Okay, so that's two thousand nine hundred and fifty. And the other one is from Stevens disposal, for two compacted trucks at a cost of thirty five hundred, two thirty yard roll offs. Two thirty yard roll offs at a cost of a thousand, so total for all services is four thousand, five hundred.
I'll make a motion to take Fairways bid of twenty nine fifty.
I second.
Moved by Strong, second by Bo, I keep on Bochamp, second by Bochamp, roll call please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strong, yes. Treasurer, uh, Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Just stay. Motion clear. Okay. Park grant update, I think I've mentioned before that I had applied for a park grant. I've made it through the first three phases, I'm in the final phase of the park grant. Um, if we get this grant, they'll pay fully for all the play equipment out there, the only thing we'll have to pay for is to have a sidewalk put in from the driveway to the backfield there, and then we have to clear off the land. The capsoil. Um, and this grant is community based, they really want the residents to be involved in the planning, um, so if you know any children that would like to sit in on meeting, to discuss what they'd like to have out there. Um, and we will need adults and we will need volunteers to, um, build the playground. They will have people out here to assist us, um, from the playground equipment, that will help us get it all put together, but again, it's very community based. Um, we would like to get everybody involved, so we have a youth meeting coming up. Um, the community meeting is Wednesday, September seventeenth, at six thirty, for anybody in the community that would like to attend this meeting. Um, it's just kinda, they want a little background on our, our township, they'd like to talk to some of the residents to see what your interests are. Um, and I will have Anita put the meeting ID and passcode on there for anybody that would like to, um, attend the team's meeting. I'm really excited about this grant, I've been trying to get a grant for a park out there for like five years, and usually it's a match grant, or, um, I, I just never have succeeded. And this one, the Monroe County, um, grant facility recommended, calling me asking if I would be interested and recommended me to Zoom, um, so. I'm excited, it looks like we're gonna work hard this autumn. And it's Wednesday, September seventeenth, at six thirty, um. And I, I've already talked with the attorney, and I've talked with our insurance company, depending on the cost of the equipment, we're talking like four or five hundred dollar insurance increase for our insurance to, um. Ensure the, the equipment.
Is that for you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, um. And I've also, since I've gotten this grant, I've had other, um, people at the Greater Marin Area Foundation reach out to me that's willing to do volunteers, and willing to extend it next year. Like playing the basketball court, or pickleball court, um, so I've got a lot of people that are interested.
And how much money grants would you say it was, or?
It's probably gonna be anywhere two to three hundred thousand for the, for the structures and stuff, the first phase, and they pay for everything. And so we don't have to do any matches, we don't have to, all they request is that it's community involved. So, once we do this meeting, September seventeenth, i- if we get a good turnout from the community, I'm thinking I'm gonna get this grant. So.
So, is anybody with kids?
I want to, I, I, I just can't remember what day we leave to go on vacation, I know it's my, my round my birthday is the twentieth, I just don't know if it's that or later, if it, if it's after that, I definitely agree on, uh.
Yeah, they don't have to attend this one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's just, the adults. It's for the, the adults.
Oh, oh, okay, which one was it, you said?
We're gonna, uh, after we get, if, once we get the grant approved.
Oh, okay.
Then we'll get a, um, we have to do a, um, youth one, so they'll, they'll come out here, they'll provide pizza and everything for the kids.
Oh, cool.
Um, they can go through the brochures, just pick what they kinda want out there, um, so yeah, it's, it's gonna be, it's.
Nice, yeah, I'll still try to make that.
And I went to, um, a couple places that, uh.
There are so many.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I went to a couple places that Zoom has, um, put in parks, and they're really nice.
Kubo meetings.
I mean Kubo, I'm sorry, and they're really nice, I don't know if any of you have been behind, um, Monroe Township, they got a park back there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I went back there last weekend, I walked, and it's, they're on their third phase.
Oh.
And it's, it's really nice, and they're even talking, we can do walking trails through the woods area we got, we can do, um, nature stations for the kids, I mean, there's all kinds of things we can do. Um, it sounds like the investor is interested in, maybe in what I did, so.
That's awesome.
I'm pretty excited, so, I'm excited, I'm hoping.
Good for you.
Everything I've been working hard for, let's say, for you, is to try to get something.
I'm working hard on it, yeah.
That's awesome.
And that's an update for that, so, again, I'll have Anita put, um, the meeting ID and passcode on our Facebook page and our webpage.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, September seventeenth at six thirty, to anybody in the community that would like to, um, attend.
Can you, you know that too, also, you.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, I'll do it for everybody. So, I will make a motion to approve the park grant update.
Second.
Moved by Strong, second by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion clear. Doors painted to match. Okay, you did this, Lisa.
I did, um, actually, um, Brad is paint, is taking off all of the doors from the front of the building, the little path door, all the way to the back here.
Mm.
This, this last meeting door will only be painted on the one side, not on the inside. But all the rest of the doors will be painted on the inside and outside, the dark gray that the beams are, and I believe he sent you the.
Two.
Yeah, hundred dollars. He is taking them all off, taking them home, sanding them all down, and painting them.
I'll make a motion to approve paint the doors to match, for six hundred dollars, up to six hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Moved by Howard, second by Bochamp. Roll call please.
Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strong, yes. Treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Pankowski is excused.
Bochamp carry. Way around bottom of the rooms.
This is Leo, the guy that is putting in the floors, um, all of the borders, we weren't going to use borders at first. Because of the new paint and the new floor, but from it being such an old building, the, the walls are a little off. So, it made sense for us to do the borders, and so he went and picked up all the material for us, we didn't have to do any of the shopping, we didn't have to do any of the purchasing. He did all of that and put in all of the borders in the hallway here, and all of the borders up front, and I believe he did the furnace room. If not, he's doing that, um, because the floor, because the floor is in, and the bathroom.
Yeah, the bathroom.
And that was six, six, five, yeah, six sixty five.
Six, six, six dollars, yep.
He already has done that, or is he going to?
There are, he's not done yet, he started only because the floors, they, the rooms that he did the floors, he, he started, he didn't go because he had guys here. So, I told him it was like.
So, he's gonna trim up and I'll take it, like.
The border, like the whole bridge border all the way around.
That's about, yeah, I think, uh. It's nice.
What do you, yeah.
Yeah, it's a dark gray. He's doing all of the transitions from room to room, he's doing the transition in the bathroom, um, where that little marble piece was, he hasn't done any of that yet, but that's what, that's what this is all for.
This is my gram too.
Mm-hmm.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the border around the bottom of the rooms, true.
Second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by Bochamp.
And this is Arca money.
I was just gonna say that, this is all Arca money.
Yeah. Supervisor Turner?
Yes.
Clerk Strong, yes. Treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Pankowski is excused, Bochamp carry.
Supervisor floor.
Uh, I put that on there too, because since, um, our supervisor has seen how nice the floor is looking.
Man.
She got, I knew, she got new paintings, and she got new desks, and, and so now she wants her floor done also, so, I haven't, um, had Leo get us an estimate for that yet, but I will. Um, just as, uh, just as the rest, it's all gonna be Arca money, so, um, at the next meeting, I will have him get us a quote, but just so we know, um, our supervisor would like her floor done also.
Would you mind just having him give a price for this in here too?
I can.
I mean, I don't think that'd hurt, it'd be nice to like kinda bring it around, especially if it's expensive money, you know?
I can. I can, also.
To do what we can, I guess.
Yeah, get some painting, get new curtains.
Yep, yep.
Maybe get the screen and stuff, it'd be nice to.
I will have him, I will have him give a, give me a quote, also, um, I'm gonna call, um, the red shirt back, because Penny actually found some real, real, really nice tile. Um, ceiling tile that we were gonna put in the building, except up front, this is different, up front, the, um, tile that's there is directly connected to the ceiling.
Oh, like what, great.
So, there's no way to.
They can't even pop them out, yeah?
No, there is no way to take that down, so they have to.
It's gonna be painted, it's a fake looking, um, drat soon, it's not really drat soon.
Yep.
Also, it's actually screwed, like, whatever, fascinate to, like, oh, again.
Yes. Yes. I know. So, maybe we can get the tile for in here.
Yeah. Yeah.
One thing too, that I, I mean personally, drives me crazy when I come here is that, that insulation, I'll be honest with you, cause I, it's like.
Jerry Albrecht did that.
It's like a project that just never got done, I feel like, so if there's something you guys can do about that, like, that's the only thing that really drives me insane.
I think Brad might be able to fix that.
Yeah, he might be able to put like a facial on it or something.
Yeah, just, just something to make it look finished, I guess.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll get a quote for this, quote for painting, and look at new curtains, look at getting that fixed, and we'll get quotes and any of that.
Yeah. Yep, I will look at it.
I think we still got like, I don't know, about eighty, a thousand or more left.
I believe so, close to it, yeah.
Yep.
Mm.
It'd be nice to try to get it nice and here, this is kinda outdated, I feel like.
Yeah.
Yep, so anyway, regarding the tiles up front, I was gonna call, um, the red shirts again, um, the prison gentlemen, and have them come back out and paint those. So, at least they'll be freshly painted to match the rest, since we can't replace them.
Yeah, we might be able to kill them where they leaked and stuff, and, so they paint it too.
Yep. Yep.
It's probably gonna take a lot of paint, but this we can actually do.
Yes.
On the side, yeah, that one.
Yeah, so we can do the front and the trees, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll get a quote for that, and, and record it all out.
Alright, so who's making the motion?
I'll make a motion to get quotes from the supervisor's office, um, quotes for the, that meeting room, for the tile, for the flooring, the paint. Curtains, and giving this, um, up the board.
Second.
Moved by Turner, second by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion clear. Cross, um, mortgage. Article twelve to planning commission, this is something that, um, trustee Pankowski has been wanting to do. Um, I had, here you look at it.
Do you have the paperwork coming?
No, I don't, I need it, stop.
Zoe ordinance article twelve.
Oh, yes.
That's on the town, Zoe, is it a thicker one?
I'm here, but I thought this is.
Okay.
Oh, oh, it's a second, okay.
Okay, um. He wants to send it back to the planning commission, I did notice that, um, it is outdated anyway, cause it still talks about sending it to the, um, planning commission on page twenty. To the county planning commission, and that's in the one that's obsolete, so that does need to come out.
Uh-huh.
To do if you wanna make that point to the planning commissioners, but that definitely needs to come out.
Did you say that was on page?
Page twenty, number four.
Four, okay.
And then Bondi said that the commissioners should probably look at, um, including, um, cause right now they're exempt, but to include in site plan process for essential services and public utilities. Um, we don't have anything in here for that, and she said that's probably something we should include.
What did she say?
Public utilities and essential services.
Yeah.
Um, I can, um, email her back and ask her to send some, um, examples of what she thinks should be in here. Um, but if we have to motion it to go back to the planning commissioners.
So, part of article twelve, isn't that.
What this article is.
It's spying that it's taken, given the board, the.
Yeah.
The final say back.
I'm kind of confused why we're sending this to the planning commission to.
Sometimes let's do it. Because anytime they have ordinance change, like this is changing article twelve, it's changing, but now.
Where, but then how can, how can, how can the planning commission approve? Or why would they, why would they approve something? I, 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 I don't know, um, it just seems like it's kind of a backwards way of doing it, I understand that normally an ordinance goes to them, but to me, this ain't really, I mean, I guess it is an ordinance, but it don't really, I mean. So, what happens if they reject it then? Is what my question would be.
But they can't technically.
Or like if they just don't allow it to be where the board has final approval, because if they're the ones creating.
Well, they can change whatever they want in there, see, right now, article twelve is, they have the final say, except for certain things have to, like, or they're just.
Yeah. No, no, I agree, yeah, and it mostly is to, so that we're not spending so much time here, I would assume, the main purpose of it, um, so you don't have to read through all of our, um.
And I kind of agree with you, Daryl, because the planning commission is what we have them for, um, a lot of the board members here don't know our ordinances, don't know that, I mean. Honestly, to look at a site plan, we know a little bit of.
That's kinda what I'm looking at a little bit.
We have no experience. I, I don't know why Pankowski is pushing for this, but he's the one that wanted to send it back, um.
I mean, I agree with him, but I don't at the same time, you know, now.
Right, I do, there's certain things I agree with, there's certain things I don't, I think as elected officials, that's putting quite a bit of.
Well, the thing is, I mean, if, 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 you know, a lot of these, if they start coming to us, I mean, we're gonna sit here and go through a site plan, the same way that we just did at the planning commission, I, I don't really care, I mean, it, it doesn't bother me, I mean, I've already did it, and I'd be able to probably. Help you guys get through it, but I, I feel like it's gonna take up a lot of time, um, because there's gonna be a lot of back and forth, the thing is, that if ordinance is set in place, the way I look at it, it shouldn't matter which. If it's the planning commission or the board approving it, because that means there has to be somewhere inside of ordinances to allow that planning commission to approve it to begin with, legally. Now, if you're losing lawsuits or having issues, I can foresee this happening, but since everything's been going correctly, and there hasn't been really any issues, I just, I, I, I just feel like it's gonna be a lot of wasted time here, because that's their job to do that. So, we're basically eliminating the, the planning commission to a certain extent, we're taking the, take, tie in their hands, because we're gonna come here and they completely possibly change everything, so we're basically being the planning commission and the board all in one. So, that's my, that's the downfall side, I, I see it both ways.
I think what he's concerned about is that, with the planning commission having final say, they're, they are an appointed board. Where how do we put the planning commission responsible?
So, my, so my, so, my argument would be, the board approves the ordinances, right? All, every ordinance that that planning commission has to go through to be able to approve anything, the board approved that ordinance, so that's, that's where we're, that, that's the part that I'm not understanding.
Yes.
We're here to approve each individual ordinance, and whenever somebody comes here to file a permit, these ordinance are already in place, so the planning commission is using all the ordinance that the board approved, to approve or disapprove the permit. Or change the permit based on all these ordinances, so now we have all these ordinances, and now, we're still saying, wait a minute, you guys can go ahead and do all this work, we're still gonna be the ones to approve each individual permit, I mean, I, I just feel like that's like, you know, kinda. That'd be like, that'd be like Penny taking the rights away from all you guys, saying, hey, yeah, I'm gonna make you guys do all the work, but if I don't like something, I'm gonna change it, that's the way that I look at it.
See, I, I've always agreed too, I, I don't think this board should have final say, I think if, if we do, it's gonna keep going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and we could tie residents up for months.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out what we want, what they want.
Because, yeah, because we might not agree with what the planning commission agreed on, but the thing is, the ordinance at the end of the day, if the ordinance says they should be able to do it.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to argue against it, you know, that they can or they can't, you know, so.
I feel that too.
That, that's my only argument.
So, what about, what about saving, legally saving the planning commission? From what I think Mr. Pankowski is worried about? Or his ideal, ideolo- ideology of it is, is, I mean, if there's an issue, can we have a combined meeting with the board and the planning commission?
A joint board. Well, I saw that, we had.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
We had a joint meeting because we were, we're sure about.
Yeah.
But that one was a little different, I guess, because we were actually creating the ordinance, which would have to get approved by you guys, if. If, if the solar would have already had an ordinance in place, then it would have never came to you guys, we would have just went off of the ordinance, and then if everything meets the criteria of what the ordinance was, then it should pass, and that's like what the, the hard part is, like, we're, we're like, we're like getting in too much, like, almost like we're, we're creating the ordinance, we're the ones approving it. So, yeah, we do the legwork at the planning commission to create the ordinance, and it comes here, we finalize the ordinance, but now we're saying, now we wanna second just, second guess ourselves on what we already have done.
Mm-huh.
You see, I mean, that's kinda, it's like counter, counteracting to me, like, we're, we're kinda just spinning our wheels, coming back around, you know?
See, I, I have no complaints, right now, I have no complaints at the planning commissioners, I know you guys are doing a great job, you're very thorough, um, any re- recommendations that I make, you guys are very responsive to my, my questions and my, you know. So, I, myself, I don't agree with this, I just don't think this board should have, um, fine.
What did Bondi actually say?
She, she says that there's a lot of projects that don't, that you can get in the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause I mean, you gotta think, if you're, imagine if we were like a big, like, the city of Atlanta, imagine trying to go through every single permit.
Um, yeah. A city, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
You know what I mean?
Mm-huh. So, that's. She says it's, it's completely, she said that either way, it's, it's, you can do it, but she said sometimes let's do, some don't. Do, we just don't.
I mean, I, I just remember years ago, when I was the treasurer, she had stated that the board should have the final say, because they are the elected officials, don't make the planning commission, commissioners responsible for something that they're appointed to.
Okay, this is what she said, section twelve point oh four A provides currently that amendments to the provisions of the zoning ordinance may be initiated by the township board, planning commissioners Z A, or by petition for one or more residents or landowners of the township. An amendment to the official zoning map may be initiated by the township board, planning commissioners Z A, or by the title holder for the property subject to proposed amendment. No fee shall be charged for amendments initiated by the township board, planning commissioners Z A. My question was, do, we have to send this back, is what my question was, is that, so we do. Um, so she thinks board should make a motion for it to the P C, P C, and if the board is not in favor of changing the process, then you will now, you will know, and they will not send it to the P C and save some time and money. Um, the only changes that she thought, our article twelve currently would be, take out the, the number four, cause we no longer need that.
Mm-huh.
And add essential services and public utilities should be.
Meaning what?
Um, that, right now, they're exempt, and she said we should add those back in for the site managers, they should have, like, essential services and public utilities should have to go through the site management process.
Okay.
Like solar battery storage, wind, etc., soon to need to retire, warrant a site plan, special use approval. So, that was something, she said the original article twelve, we should, um.
So, can we just add something in, in the article twelve stating that if there's a big issue, that the board and the planning commission will meet together?
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, the planning commission, if we get to a stump, like, where we're, where we don't know what to do, we will, we can, we can ask the board, that's like what we did during solar, even before it even got to you guys.
This is what she said.
But I mean, but I mean, maybe that will help.
This is. This is some more of her opinions, she says some townships do it, some don't, some just have special use for boards of relegation and not site plans. I assume, she says, do you have a lot of them? I assume not, but if you do, you could clog up your agendas.
Yeah.
If there is a lack of trust or confidence in the decisions of the P C as to site plans and special uses by boards or members. Um, some elected officials also prefer not to be reviewing approved site plans and special uses, cause that can put some pressure on the elected, electives by property owners for and against the use, which some elected officials prefer to the planning commission.
I mean, how about we ask her if there's a way just to protect our planning commission member, I mean, I think that's what he's concerned about, that they're appointed people. And they're not.
We're, we're appointed, but we still have a guideline, you see, that means, so like, everything would.
And it's still covered under our insurance also, cause a, a lot of our commissioners have been in court because of stuff, so.
Yeah, we're.
Right. Right.
It's, um, it's the other group expertise that's been in court basis.
I mean, we're.
I do think some stuff needs to be changed on article twelve, but I, my personal opinion is, I don't think it needs to come back to this board, back and forth.
I.
Cause it's, it can tie it up for months.
Mm-huh.
But I do think there's, there is some language clean up on the original article twelve, I think, that needs to be done.
Yeah.
So, if anything, I think we should send the original article twelve back for some language clean up.
Okay.
Maybe we can have it, or maybe send the planning commission, maybe, maybe we could talk to, to Bondi about it, if there was like an dispute, so if there was one or two of the planning commission members were highly against something, maybe that we could, then, I don't know how we would do it, but at that point, they'll let it come to the board for, you know what I mean?
That's what I was saying.
If not, everybody's in favor, I guess, something like that, or, you know, I don't know if you can or not, I don't know.
Yeah. Just get worrying from her, cause this is quite.
Um. Cause sometimes, you know, sometimes you are outweighed at the planning commission.
Yeah.
I don't know where Kankowski got this, apparently it was something that we tried to do years ago and it never passed, and we didn't answer.
Yeah, I think, I think it was way, way back, but yeah, but I do understand where he's coming from, but I also understand on the other side, that our hands are tied anyway, because we have an ordinance to go by, so then, I feel like we're not getting anywhere by sending it here, because I'm gonna come here and say, well, the ordinance says this can happen, so why are we, why are we questioning this, you know what I mean? So, that's what's, that's the biggest thing. If you have an issue with it, we need to be having an issue at each ordinance that comes up, so, and then you can correct all these problems, if you see what I mean, whatever issues that you don't like, or whatever it may be, that when we redo an ordinance, then fix it at that time, and then make, and then that ties the the planning commission up, because we have to follow what the board's guidelines are, you know?
See, everything else is the same, it's just a matter of, he's wanting to add it, that it has to come to us. Everything else in article twelve is the same, except for that section is where, um.
That's a lot of stuff to come over here.
Mm-hmm, it is, it is, I, I agree, I know, right now, we have the ordinances to have to come to us, which is, I think they should.
And I mean, we spend sometimes months and months on some of these, you know, going back and forth.
Mm-huh.
I would say if, if a board member really has an issue with the way we're doing something, they should be coming to our meetings, I mean, as in,
Mm-huh.
we're definitely gonna listen to their input, especially, you know, the public hearings, you know?
Right, right.
Um, and kinda go that route, and then if you have an issue with it, when it comes back up, you know, when we redo our ordinances, then try to correct some of that, that issues that you don't like, you know, and then that goes back to planning commission, and we have to follow it, you know?
Like I said, I've never, I've always had all the board members be very responsive, anything I had any questions about, were concerned about, um, I asked and I did answer, so.
And we're not losing, uh, anything, we haven't been doing anything wrong, I feel like, you see what I mean?
Right. Right.
If we did, I could feel, you know, I could definitely understand where he's, where he's coming from, but everything that, that I've been reading and everything that I've been seeing, that we've really have, we've, we've done pretty good, and, you know, even when it's been questioned, even in the court, that we've been winning, you know what I mean?
Mm-huh.
So, that, I, that's why I'm kinda more against it, I guess, but I do understand where he's coming from at the same point, so.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion not to send the, uh, new article twelve to the planning commission, but to send the original article twelve for some language clean up.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Turner, seconded by.
Send the original.
Yeah, yeah, and not to send this new article twelve. What we do, um, and I'll get with Bondi to, I'll send her the original one, and, and have it as some language clean up related to this.
Cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion appears. Okay, so article twelve's gonna stay as it is, except for some language clean up. Uh.
Okay.
Context ordinance. At first, we had one from Conway Township, I don't know where he got the, he said he, when I asked.
And it's supposed to be Conex.
Conex, I think it's supposed to be Conex.
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 Conex. So, no teeth.
Round teeth.
Um, so I asked him to, I said, Mike, this isn't even related to a township, so he sent me this other version here that you guys should have in your packets, this, um, hook of red.
Yeah.
So, I took the Conway out, cause he had the Conway in the.
Oh, okay, that's right.
I took that out.
Okay.
Um.
This is part of the period, this is, this must be a part of.
The two, three, twenty five, yeah, that's the second figure.
But it's, he sent me this, but it, it's still.
Not correct.
Not correct, it still doesn't have the correct stuff at the top, and then he's got this red with, out with stuff.
Yeah.
So, no plumbing may be run or connected to a cargo container, I think that needs to stay in there, uh, is, is that something you guys to go?
What was your question again?
Under cargo containers, number five, he's got a find out, no plumbing, may be run or connected to a cargo container.
Why is that crossed off? Did you guys agree upon?
Look at that, I thought that we did, yeah, we, so we, we do want plumbing in it, um, for farm use, you know, sort of, chickens or whatever, as long as it meets,
Hmm. Right.
you know, the, the like little plumbing code, so I'm pretty sure that we are, we, we, on our end, want it. This, I think, is like a rough draft, I don't know if.
But then it says no livestock or pets may be stored in the cargo containers.
See, this was wrong.
Yeah, well, that's why he crossed it off, because we do want it, so what he's doing is, so.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, so though, so that's stuff that he has crossed off, I think, instead of add it, they just just disregarded it, I guess, you see what I mean, Penny, does that make sense?
So, he needs to get us a clean copy, yes.
A little bit cleaner copy, because it's kinda.
Cause this is from February third.
Really, he should have just deleted those lines out, I believe, um, because we don't need to put, you can, we just need it to just not say that you can't, I guess, you see what I mean?
Right, yeah.
Right.
Right.
See, and they just need to be deleted out.
So, it needs to be cleaned up, so.
All, everything in red just needs to be deleted, and then, I don't think that it needs to go back to the planning commission, because we, we approved it without the, that stuff, and that
Right.
it should have just been deleted out, and then.
Do you have the clean copy of, of?
That, and then. I don't think so, cause I think we, I think, I'll have to double check, I'll have to double check, I think it was like this, but we, we approved it with, with the amendments
He was supposed to be the clean copy?
of this, you see what I mean?
Mm-huh.
With it being amended to, to subtract this stuff out, if I remember, I mean, I'll have to look back at mine, um, but I'm pretty sure, that's why I was this way.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, cause I'm confused, I mean, this is two, three, twenty five version, and like I said, at first, we got this Conway township one.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
Yeah, the Con, yeah, I think that we, I mean, we, we looked at some of those, don't get me wrong, but yeah, I don't think that, um, that.
I guess why I asked.
We, we, we had it, we had basically a final, um, for the most part, it just.
See, that's what I'm saying, before he gives this to us, this, it needs to be the final, whatever you guys approve.
Should have corrections.
The final.
Yeah.
This stuff is crazy.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, cause I asked him if he did have a clean copy, and he just said this one.
We should, I mean, next time, I guess, just let him delete it out, I guess, cause I think that's the majority of it.
See, what worries me with this, I think before he sends it to us, he needs to get a clean copy to you guys, so that you can look at it, be sure that that's what you guys agree with.
Yeah, so I wasn't at that last meeting, I'll have to look in the minutes and see, and I'll ask Doug also, um, I'll, cause he'll have a clean version if we have it, and I will too from the previous.
Yeah. He shouldn't send it to us till he gives you guys a clean version to look at.
Right, yeah, okay.
Um.
Okay, so I make a motion to table it then.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't see how it's a big deal even table it, but we haven't had a Conex ordinance for a long time, so might as well make sure it's right.
I'll make a, I'll second that motion to table it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion appears, and I will make a note to let Mike know that he needs a clean copy to you guys.
Yeah, and we might as well run back through the planning commission also, I'll be actually make sure.
Yeah, cause you guys, I mean, you don't really know what you, what, you could put anything in there.
Well, we do, but we get so many different versions, and then we'll, we'll send it, yeah.
Right, and he needs a final.
Right, it needs to be final, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause he could change anything, and you guys wouldn't know it.
Yeah, that's actually happened, I believe, before.
Yes, yes, it has.
Okay.
Okay. Maintenance helper pay, it's supposed to be known, um, our maintenance guy has had his son coming in, helping him, um, move a lot of stuff, put dust together, he's put in about thirteen hours.
That is not.
So, um, I think he, we should compensate him somehow, because if we would have paid somebody to come in here and do that, it would cost us a lot more than seventeen dollars an hour.
Agree.
Mm-hmm.
So, I will make a motion to pay the maintenance helper for thirteen hours at seventeen dollars an hour.
Second.
Seconded by Turner, seconded by Bochamp. No companies.
Sufra's or Turner?
Yes.
Drick's job?
Yes.
Trust me, Bochamp?
Yes.
Trust me, Howard?
Yes.
Trust me, the captain, so.
Let's make that motion.
Add Penny.
So, it would be.
Say, I agree.
Pay thirteen hours.
Two hundred and twenty one dollars, just so that you know.
Was it two hundred and twenty one?
Yeah.
Okay. Sick time resolution re-adoption, as you know, we adopted this back last February, and then they changed it to where it wasn't gonna go unaffected till October, so now it's it's going to affect October first, so we need to re-approve it, um, it's sick time for our hourly employees. Anything of, they get one hour for every thirty hours, so we're gonna start keeping track, uh, effective February first, we're gonna have to do some type of spreadsheet, um.
So, does, um, can paychecks keep tracking that also?
Um, they did quote me a price, but it's like a hundred and some dollars a month.
I would say to probably do it till, I mean, to be honest with you, I, I could feel.
With paychecks, they will, actually, it's kinda cool, cause paychecks, it, it's like a time clock in, clock in, clock out kinda thing, um.
And we only have.
It'll probably be on their paychecks.
We only have five people that are doing it, you know?
Right, so it would be.
So, we have Carla, Teresa.
So. So, it'd be a hundred thirty six dollars a month for between three.
Rachel.
For, it's kinda expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
But made, made one mistake, and, you know, that, that's the biggest issue, it's a lot of responsibility, or if there's an argument, then, you know, I mean, it's a lot of legwork to go back through all that.
Oh. And see how this is set up, it's a time management, it's where they have to clock in and clock out, and it does their timesheet for them.
I think that we have to do it.
What's really nice is, it will alert me if they're clocking in from someone besides here, it'll send a thing saying, I agree, man, he's clocking in at home.
Oh.
It goes away, it'll warn me.
Oh, okay.
That would actually be done, I would think.
And, um, you know.
We might should have that either way.
And then it will automatically send their timesheet to Anita, and it will keep track of their, their time, and they can go in, look at their banks to see how much they got. It'll take their bank off, you know, and they'll use it, you can either upload it, um, instead of keeping track for every thirty hours, you can automatically, um, according to the ordinance, you can upload, I think it's forty hours, just a lot to, or, so keep the track of it.
How many people are? I believe five, Carla, Teresa, Rachel.
Mike.
Blake.
Ken.
Ken.
Lot of.
After all, I mean, it's mandatory.
And, and Brad.
Brad, so.
So, that's six.
So, that would cost us.
Is it per person, a hundred dollars per person?
Mm-huh.
Or, well.
Yeah, there's six per person.
A lot? What?
Oh, man.
Per employee fee is four ninety five, um, or.
Yeah, I thought it was that much.
I thought it was just the add.
Paycheck plus nine per, like, fee is a hundred and five, paychecks plus flex time management per employee is a thirty one. Then there's a six hundred dollar setup fee.
Oh, boy.
It's expensive.
You can't, you can't just do it where it's, um, just add in the, the, um, the sick leave on there without having to, without all the rest of the stuff, or you have to have all that.
That's a business. We have to have all of it, we have the flex time management.
Yeah.
It's only a dollar fifty five, and then flex time per employee is a dollar five. Um, so, it's like a hundred thirtys, thirty six dollars, and they have a minimum fee of a hundred and five.
Per person, that's a lot.
See, well, this is a quota of twenty, so, it's four ninety five per employee, and then, um, dollars.
Oh.
What, up to twenty employees?
Up to twenty.
Oh, the, oh, that's, I thought you were saying that's how much.
Oh.
So, that's a hundred and five, so, but it's gonna be at least a hundred, the, minimum will be a hundred and five dollars.
I thought you were saying that's how much. Yeah, but it would be per employee.
Yeah, but for six people.
Six people now.
For six, oh, I am.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I was, I thought.
I thought you were saying per person.
I thought it was per person.
Wow. Like, some of these people might not even hardly make that, like, start to say like a couple days a week.
Right.
And, um, uh, time off management has a minimum fee of twenty nine, so it'd be about a hundred thirty dollars a month for employees, and then there's a six hundred dollar setup fee.
Yeah, I'd say definitely.
I'd say do it.
Mm-huh, cause that would, uh, like I said, it would compete the timesheets, like I said, they would have to clock in, clock out, and then they would send it to her automatically.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And someday, it might actually save money if people.
I'd of worth, you know, save.
Good on us, yeah, I don't think we have any issue with it, but someday you could, and that would kinda help solve that issue either way, so.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, let's start with the sick, listen first. I'll make a motion to approve the earned sick time resolution, and it will be resolution number oh nine dash oh eight dash two oh two five.
Second.
Seconded by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion appears. And then I'll make a motion to, um, use paychecks plus flex time off management, um, up to, um, about, let's see. Around by, plus to, um, approximately a hundred thirty four dollars a month, and then there's a setup fee of six hundred. So, I'll make a motion to approve paychecks flex time with a setup cost of six hundred dollars and a monthly cost of a hundred thirty four.
Second.
Move by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, the work office supervisor turner?
Yes.
Kirk's job?
Yes.
Treasurer Bochamp?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And Trustee Kunkowski, excuse me, it's Bochamp.
So just, real quick, this ornament.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the resolution here, um, who, who created, or is it just a, a statement, this, this is obviously a statement, okay, that's what I was wondering, I didn't, I just wanna make sure that, you know,
I see.
Uh-huh.
That's what I thought, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, I mean, Bondi went through the wording and stuff to, to make sure, but, yeah, it's, um, and I included the payment, the lead action stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna make sure it didn't come from like another township or something, and we.
Oh, no, no, this is something to state, and I have to hang the poster up too before October first.
I'm out. That's we came from the state.
Yeah, I'll, with that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, second citizens' time, I think we have a gentleman here that wants to speak.
Absolutely, well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate the accommodation, and Madam Supervisor, Board of Trustees, thank you. Uh, I appreciate time to address and chat a little bit, uh, about who we are.
Okay.
Uh, I've provided on the board table our information, it is basic, my card is there, and insert that gives you a little more background into what we do. My name's Anthony Burdick, and I'm the executive director for the consultancy. We operate in our tri-county community areas that would be Washington, Wayne, and of course Monroe. Uh, and we are operating out of Belville, Michigan. Uh, we offer a full range of guidance, support services, we do that on hourly project contract basis. Um, we work with businesses of all types, sizes, complexities, industries, uh, even public entities. We work with local township charter and municipality governments, and, um, nonprofits, and, and also communities, associations. And we provide services that are of guidance and support nature, and we get into everything from, um, profitability, revenue management, even public funds management, strategies in, uh, growth and efficiencies, and departmental interdependencies, quality, and then frankly, for, for me, uh, near and dear to this capitalist heart, uh, margin improvements and pure profitability. So, having said all that, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to drop off information, I do that out of courtesy. I've been to many of your township neighbors over the, um, past few weeks and months, uh, because for me, it is about courtesy. Working with businesses and, and those who operate inside your township, it's kinda now, nice to know who's out there, who's working with your constituencies, your residents, and helping them. So, again, be, on behalf of the consultancy, thank you, and thank you for the work you do every day. From what I've watched tonight, you've earned your money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, I look forward to speaking with you soon.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, Board of Trustees, Darryl's got anything?
No, I don't think I have anything.
Melissa?
No.
Anita?
I do not.
Okay, again, um, if you're available for, um, September seventeenth at six thirty for the, um, park meeting, I would appreciate anybody that can attend to attend, and we'll get it out there.
Yes, please, at Zoom, the note from home. Yes.
Yes, it's an extra key, but, yeah, it's easy to do, just kinda like Zoom, and hit that, and say we will close adjourn at eight forty five, I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll say, move by Turner, seconded by Bochamp, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion appears.
And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Good meeting, guys.
Yes.
You covered a lot of ground.
We did, we did, and we did it for a good time, too.
We didn't have any extractions.
Right.
You didn't throw me out.
And you did pull asleep, and you did pull asleep on us.
No, not at all, hey, I, uh, I've done a lot of work with local governments, so, yeah.